President Bueker, Trustee Barhite, Trustee Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Polley.
Here.
Trustee Faber.
Here.
Trustee Hopkins.
Here.
And Trustee Gant.
Here.
Thank you. Yes, agendas were posted Thursday, October 30th.
Please do approve of the agenda sequence.
Madam President, I'd like to move item nine up to just after number seven.
Okay, that is fine with me. Anyone else? All right. Okay, we will move on into public comments. Please address the board. There will be no back and forth discussions and there is a three minute limit. Thanks. All right, Mr. Woodkey, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and if you can speak into the microphone, otherwise it's hard to hear. Thank you.
Jim, James Woodkey, two-two, four-one-six, eighty-eight Street, Salem, Wisconsin. Well, last meeting, there was a kind of a procedural discussion that went around and around on the eighty thousand dollar, whatever the heck that was, don't even remember. And I thought that when it, as it ended, it didn't, that it was going to be a line item, budget change, or something like that, and that that would be this meeting. I don't see that on the agenda anywhere. So just kind of, you know, you're not gonna answer me, but seems odd because it was a lot of question about that. And I know saving time and saving money is a big thing, and that's great. I like that plan. But sometimes having legal here makes sense because maybe we get answers to some of the questions that we might need answered. So we're operating and doing things procedurally correct. So just my thought on that one.
Thank you. Okay. President's comments? The first thing I would like to do is take a moment to recognize Trustee Barhite's father passing. So Leeverhite Junior, I believe, was ninety-five, almost, yeah, ninety-five years old, passed away on October twenty-third. So he was a lifelong resident of Trever. He served in the Marine Corps. He was also a second generation member of the Trever Volunteer Fire Department and served our area from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen eighty-six. He was a supporter of the Trever Grade School, the Kenosha County Fair Association, and the Moose Lodge. He was also a second generation family business owner of Barhite Excavating and Landscaping, which was started in the nineteen fifties. And Trustee Barhite is operating that business today. So I think that he, the reason that I wanted to recognize him, not only because he was a trustee's father, but because of the commitment that he gave our community. That was, you know, thirty-two years with our fire department, and that's commendable. Okay. All right, the next thing, I just want to go through some housekeeping. So if trustees have questions on agenda items, if possible, please don't wait until the meeting to ask them. Give the courtesy to the staff to ask ahead of time so they're not blindsided. They are here to help. I know that they would appreciate the opportunity to look into something ahead of a meeting. I think it would also help our meetings to be more productive. And then agenda item requests, you know, we do do that. I have it on for the second meeting of the month. If you have something outside of that, please send them to me, and I will add them to the agenda or have follow-ups. There's, you know, Trustee Polley has one for an ADU ordinance. We had a nice long talk tonight. We've talked through some things. Sometimes agenda requests aren't always ready to just go on an agenda, and they need a little bit of background work before we can just stick them on here. So that would be great if everyone could do that. Okay, that's all I have. So we will go into number nine, the fire department, discussion and possible action on the following. Nine point one, station number four upgrade, increase of eight thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars for a revised total of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars with work to be completed by share construction.
We did some research reevaluating what was necessary and what's appropriate with that project as it relates to upgrading the building across the street. After evaluating and going through some inspections and determining determining what's necessary at this point in time, we eliminated several of the projects that were on the overall RFP, bringing us down to a grand total of fifty-four thousand, three twenty-seven. Substantial savings over the major part of the project, and it would facilitate getting us in there in an appropriate timeframe. So we're asking for approval of that total, what you see on the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Hopkins and Gant, are there any questions?
The one piece I would like to add to what Chief Carr also said was the original budget that came before us was eighty-eight thousand. And after discussions with both Chief Carr, Sarah, because we're also going to be doing our polling in that location, Trustee Gant and Jay, our interim administrator, we felt it much better to, as Chief put it, put these cost cuts in place and reduce what we were asking for out of that building.
And on the other hand, too, if we're going to move our polling place over from the village hall over to the new, basically, fire station, okay? It'd also be ADA accessible, so we have to do a lot of concrete work on both sides of the building.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is that'll be our only fire station on the west side of the railroad tracks, and with the amount of trains that go by today, almost thirty a day, it's important to have equipment on that side of the tracks.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You're free to go. All right, number eight, presentation petitions communications. Discussion and possible action on the following. Eight point one, community impact programs, foster care presentation by Ashley.
I'll let you.
That's actually not us, so it's okay. My name's Melissa, and this is Jen. Jen and I are both foster moms here in Kenosha County. We also have the privilege of working alongside our county in recruitment efforts. On any given day here in Kenosha County, we have on average two hundred children in out-of-home care. Our fam- our family, our county, alongside many other counties, are experiencing a foster care crisis where we, here in Kenosha, are forty-four zero families short of what we need to sustain the amount of children coming into out-of-home care. That's causing not only siblings to be split up into different homes, but siblings to be split up into different counties, affecting their relationships with their siblings and their parents. Back when I started, and I'm sure you can attest to this, we were barely utilizing the shelter, and now shelters are being maxed out with anywhere from newborns to teens. The last five years especially, I think since COVID, we've seen less families willing to open up their homes or ready to open up their homes, rather. And the sad reality is our kids don't have anywhere to go. So people always ask us when we're all like, what? Okay, I had no idea. Well, you don't know until you know, so now you know. What can you do with that? First of all, you could become a foster parent, which we love to talk to you about if you ever interested. But more importantly, for this meeting, how can you partner with us? So are there businesses in the community that could host info sessions, that could post posters or yard signs? We've had businesses that we can host fax and snacks, so we come and just share more about foster care Kenosha at your places of employment. That might be places on a billboard for us, or even a banner at a ballpark. Really anything, whatever your niche is, we want to find out or find a way to share with the community, especially here in the county where we have kids being removed from county homes and are bought in downtown, so, you know, very far from their roots. So we are just so desperately looking for not only more families, but especially families here in the county. So do you have any questions?
How many foster families do you have in Salem Lakes, do you know?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't have that statistic, I'm sorry.
And if somebody was interested, can you leave your information with our clerk?
Of course.
And and if there's any printed materials, we would love to have you leave those as well.
Perfect. We brought them. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions from anyone? No? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, planning and zoning, discussion and possible action on the following. Ten point one, amendment of final plat of Hawks Run subdivision, James J. Thompson, two-four-six-two-five, one hundred and eighteenth Street, Trever, Wisconsin, five-three-one-seven-nine, agent, to revise the stated side yard setback requirement from fifteen feet to ten feet via an affidavit of correction received by Planning and Development September, on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, and drafted by Michael J. Martin, P E P L S of Cardinal Engineering, located in the southeast one quarter of section twenty-seven, northeast one quarter of section thirty-four, northwest one quarter of section thirty-five, and southwest one quarter of section twenty-six, T one N, R twenty east, Village of Salem Lakes. For informational purposes only, Hawks Run subdivision is located on County Highway J F, approximately one-third mile west of State Highway eighty-three.
In your packet is an affidavit of correction to amend the side yard setbacks in the Hawks Run final plat to match the restrictive covenants that were amended and recorded June fourth, twenty-twenty-five. The amendment changes the language from the side yard setback shall not be less than fifteen feet to the side yard setback shall not be less than ten feet. Plant Commission held a public hearing for this agenda item October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The applicant presented his request to the commission. No one was present to speak in favor or against this agenda item. Commissioner Albrecht motion to recommend approval of amending the note on Hawks Run final plat to read the side yard setback, or from the side yard setback shall not be less than fifteen feet to it shall not be less than ten feet. It was seconded by Commissioner Erickson. Motion carried six to one. Recommendation is for approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions, comments?
Why do we want to reduce it now?
There is a shed that is, they want to build a shed in those side yard, yeah.
So we're gonna make it closer for everybody to be able to do that in that subdivision?
No, that is only where a side yard setback is not stated on the plat. If it is stated on the plat to be sixty-five feet, it remains sixty-five feet. Ten feet matches our current zoning code. But when they did the plat, they put on the extra five feet, they.
To make it more space between the buildings and everything.
Between the closest, the closer ones, yes.
Right. Put houses up to keep that spacing in there. I just don't see why we'd want to change it now.
Did the HOE already?
The HOE did, yes.
That's really, that's what.
It's basically what the neighborhood would like to see happen is what we're accomplishing tonight.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Yes. No.
Okay. Number eleven, Treasurer's Office, discussion and possible action on the following. Eleven point one, purchasing policy to include purchasing thresholds. I believe I would like to table this. I don't think that it is quite ready. We have a few other items I think that we need to clean up before we present that to the board. So I make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Eleven point two, contract with Clifton Larson Allen, L L P, to provide audit services for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions?
What was our cost last year? Was it the same company?
It was the same company.
I have been using CLA for a few years now.
Motion.
Let me double check. Total expenditure for CLA last year, twenty-twenty-four, was twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Number twelve, Clerk's Office, discussion and possible action on the following. Twelve point one, ordinance twenty-twenty-five point zero eight dash one oh one, an ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter four thirty-nine entitled Sex Offenders, Article One, entitled residency restrictions, section five, entitled application for exemption of the Village of Salem Lakes Municipal Code to create a sex offender residence board. So we did hear this a couple months ago. In the past, the village board has heard appeals from sex offenders wanting to come into our community. We thought that it would be better to create a sex offender residence board, which we did go through that ordinance, I think it might have been in August. And we were given several options to choose from and how we wanted the makeup of that board. And at that meeting, we decided that it would be a a three-member citizen board, and that members would serve for three-year terms and can serve no more than two terms. The residents cannot come from the same hamlet, so you cannot have two from Trever or two from Salem or et cetera. So we need one resident member from each of the hamlets, three, three total members. So that is the only change was to incorporate the makeup of that board into the ordinance that we had already discussed and heard.
Are they gonna be getting, suppose they're gonna get paid? How would they do that? See it.
I do not believe this is a paid role.
Nothing says it.
It is not a paid role.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point two, approval of minutes from the village board meeting held on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thirteen, Public Works, discussion and possible action on the following items. Thirteen point one, contract with Hometown Lawn Care, Inc., for the twenty-twenty-six grass cutting services. We don't have the amount in here, so I'm gonna pull that up, or you can speak to that.
Yeah, that, that, that could change depending on how many times we could.
Oh, gotcha.
Have it cut. In your packet is the request for proposals for the village's grass cutting services, along with a summary of submitted bids. A total of nine contractors submitted proposals and associated costs have been included in the twenty-twenty-six budget. Contracts A, C, and D will be mowed weekly and trimmed every other week. Contract B, sewer district sites will be mowed and trimmed every other week. Based on the twenty-eight week mowing period, all contracts are projected to remain within budget under this schedule. Hometown Lawn Care incorporates amid the lowest proposal during an October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five electronic proposal opening. The company has previously provided lawn maintenance services for the village and is familiar with our sites and performance standards. A recommendation is to contract with Hometown Lawn Care Incorporated for the grass cutting in twenty-twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, in the contract, I didn't see anything about safety devices, guards, or whatever. I'd like to ensure that in our contract with Hometown or any lawn service that all safety devices, both for the operator as well as people in the nearby area, those protected devices are down and working.
Absolutely, and that was part of the RFP. But we just wanted to stress that.
Who did we have last year?
Apex.
We had Apex last year.
Did they submit a bid this year?
They did not.
And this is quite a bit lower than what we had Apex for, is that correct?
It's in the right same area, but.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Fourteen, Human Resources, discussion and possible action on the following items. Fourteen point one, addition of an FMLA policy to the village personnel handbook. Before you get started on this, I'm happy to see this. However, I do think we need to redo the entire handbook.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's on the plans.
Thank you.
But FMLA came up first and, oh, sorry, I'm short. FMLA questions came up first, so I figured that's probably best to get that out of the way. Basically, it's just making it in compliance with federal and state. As some of us know, there's two different types. And it's just adding in the rules and regulations. There's also a form to fill out to request FMLA to either Human Resources or the Administrator because we have over fifty employees, so we need to have this. So we would just add it to the personnel policy. And then next year, the goal is to update the personnel policy. It's just, it's gonna take some time because we'll have to go through it section by section.
And I, I understand you, you did run this past the labor attorney and got the approval on that.
Yep. After it was written.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments?
Shay, one comment. When you do the employee handbook, where this document will reside, there's other documents in there as well. And some of those should be reviewed and acknowledged through a signature annually.
Yes.
How is that gonna separate those from the ones that, like FMLA, or possibly one time only, or?
Well, with this update, I'm gonna update what we have and then distribute electronically the updated version right now with the FMLA added, and then have everyone sign off that they received it and understand. You know, and then some of the other things will fall under HR to follow up. You know, we have a list of things we have to follow up on each year, just different varieties of them. And with new employees, we also have new things we have to get updated, like I-nines and everything like that.
All right, thank you.
I know at my work, our handbook is updated yearly, so it's looked at every single year. This is the time of year that it's being updated. And if there are any changes, every employee has to sign that they have received it and understand, so.
Yeah, I've done it where we've done in-person training, but that can get a little hard when you have DPW who have to be like at an emergency. So we're, I'm looking into electronically. Yeah, so we're also doing that with the safety training. We're working with the league on doing electronic safety training. That way, we don't have to take time away from work, so. But I also just wanted to throw some. Uh, but I also just wanted to throw something in there real quick about staffing. Um, I know we don't get to see a lot of you guys too often. Um, but I get to see pretty much everyone and I know we've been short-staffed in various departments, um, but it's. I like the atmosphere we are at. Um, everybody's stepping up to help each other and I honestly have not heard a no, at least a serious no, you know, everyone's funny, but. You know, we, we're all there to help each other out. So it's, it's a good sign, I feel like, and I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Great, thank you. Okay, fifteen administrator discussion and possible action. Oops, so sorry. Nope, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, anyone opposed? All right, fifteen administrator discussion and possible action on the following fifteen point one administrator recruitment update. The floor is yours, Jay.
All right, thanks. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to share an update. I did provide some information at our last meeting regarding. Background of an administrator in general and maybe what they do. What I, what I realized I left off is the. Variety of work that's involved in a, and I just want to chat through that a little bit and then I'll get to the recruitment update, but. Uh, your administrator, your next administrator is not likely to be, uh, an attorney, but yet is going to review legal contracts and be a part of negotiations with. With the fire labor union and active in, and work with your village attorney. Uh, they're, they're not likely to be, um, a public works professional, but yet work closely with Brad and, and Andy and, and their team. To understand and be a part of utilities, water, sewer. And, and obviously the, the road infrastructure and all the things that go into that and day-to-day operations of the, of the public workers department. Same is true of finance, not likely to be the, you know, the biggest financial mind in, in the world, but we'll work closely with Kristen and. And be responsible for the budget, which remember our talk from a few weeks ago is the single most, in my opinion, the single most important policy document that. That your board will work on in any given year or will it will act on in any given year, and that's coming up before you at the next meeting. Same is true with HR, not likely to be an HR professional, but will have those skills and, and that happens. Um, Sarah's great, so she can handle all the clerk stuff, but that's not true. Either the, the next administrator will likely support and. And help out where they can, uh, with, with elections and provide backfilling and support. And even if it's just helping a poll worker carry. The ballots in from their car at the end of the night back to central county or something like that, but wherever, wherever Sarah assigns them that evening to help out. My point in bringing that up is that it's a, it's a really variety of skill set and role that is expected of, of the next village administrator and. And. Individuals that come qualified for those positions. Not only like we talked about last, last time, prepare their life's work for that village administrator role, but they, maybe they were a planning director in the past, or they were a police chief in the past, or they were a public works director. But they bring that skill set from one area in a more prominent way, but a, a really broad. Variety of skill sets to, to this job, to this position, and they will need that. They'll need to draw on that as they're serving Salem Lakes in the future and. And serving your, you folks as board members moving forward. The application process is past first review, so we've hit first review. We have nineteen applications to date. Uh, there was a subset of the village board that was assigned to, uh, work with myself to, to review those applicants and to. Bring in some individuals for in-person interviews that, that is, that is in process. Uh, there's. Going to be an agenda posted for this coming Monday. Uh, the, the village board and, and the department team and, and individuals that were assembling for that date are, you know, are being made aware of that and. We'll have in-person interviews and a, an agenda that's coming out, um, through Sarah's office in the next few days for this coming Monday. Those in-person interviews, um, will be conducted in the afternoon and then we'll go from there as far as. Uh, moving forward with, with the next possible administrator in the seat. It is likely that, that the contract. Of a prospective administrator, it has a thirty day out or a sixty day out in their existing contract. So. Um, just maybe manage expectations that once the, uh, in-person interviews are conducted. The individual is not likely to be available to start the next day. Uh, even if it's a manager in transition. They will have some things that they're working on or personal things that they'll have to wrap up before they could, um, immediately to, to serve your organization. I'll answer any questions that you might have with me at this time, but that is my report.
So those interviews will be in closed session. Am I correct in that?
They will be in closed session, correct. Thank you.
Um, so we do have three that we, uh, all agreed on. Ironically, we all agreed on the three. So, um, so we'll be bringing in three people for, for interviews, um, starting on Monday. And, um, I am not sure if we will make a decision on Monday. Or if we're going to need follow-up interview, um, with one or two individuals in order to make our minds up. We're leaving that open. You know, it's my hope that we, um, can. To use a term Kelly said all the time, glean enough information from those interviews to be able to make a decision on Monday. Jay is going to be putting together a timeline. Um, of, uh, how the day is going to, uh, start and how much time for each. Uh, person, so. I mean. We have three, we have three people. Mm-hmm. Yes. So, uh, so that is, uh, what we're going to be doing starting, uh, Monday afternoon. So I will ask if everyone can be prepared. Jay's going to come up with, um, some questions for us to ask. And then I've also asked for some free time just to be, um, have whatever questions you have on your minds. You know, on, uh, but I guess, um, we'll have to talk about what we're allowed to ask and what we're not allowed to ask. So anyways, so hopefully we'll come to a conclusion on Monday. All right, I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Great.